Social Studies, might the freshman or sophomore, it'll only be freshman level at this point in time, right? A year and one group has gone up into high school. Have they seen a significant drop in social studies?
The group that's in high school just went one year of social studies. The group that's in high school right now, the eighth graders were the ones that went two years because it wasn't coming.
Okay. So they haven't yet gone to high school to give us the data to see a significant drop in achievement, just in grade books, not that it would be assessed on a test.
Correct. And there's one more piece of this puzzle too that I want to, for full disclosure, this as well. Whenever we have assemblies or guest speakers or we have anything at the middle school, or UE at this time, we're really talking specific middle school here. It is done during that social studies time. Because we don't have the vast majority of the students that are taking it. We don't have those materials that are ideal. So that instead of taking from math and language arts where we have that true set curriculum, those true sets of standards, we do do it during that time. So there are times that we're taking. That's just the natural, the ease of transition to take that 41-minute block. And when we have guest groups and those kind of things. So that's kind of where.
To your understanding standpoint, that we offer social studies at some aspect all the way from K through sixth grade, to now the seventh and eighth grade, and then comes back in high school.
Well, right now, what I, everything I'm saying right now is five eight. I'm only pushing seven eight just because I know money's tough. I mean, five six is, I, everything I've said right now is identical to five six. But I've just, I know budget's even tight for seven eight, but I'm, I'm high in the sky, I'm liking seven eight now and then we can implement five six. But five through eight is the exact same thing, the exact same setup.
Well, I think everybody is kind of standing with the want for social studies.
Sure.
I think, you know, we have to get lots and lots of dollars and cents here because it's, like I say, it's about the best for the kids, but it's about the money. It is really.
No matter what we do, we definitely have to, for next year, whether we bring social studies back or not, or we continue in the same format, we've got to do something to address the curriculum and put a scope and sequence in place with, with resources. I mean, I do see that. I do know we have to, Jamie and I have talked about addressing this, you know, last year we gave, or not gave, we purchased computers for seventh grade. We still have the tablets that are, that are tough, they're in tough shape. So we would still need to do something with probably notebooks again there. So that, those are a couple of things there. I did provide in your packet too about how that would affect the budget. I had Craig Kuvert's run, what if you added two teachers, what if you added four teachers, what would that do to our, to our deficits? So that you've got a money factor there. I guess what I'm kind of looking for the board is, let me hear your thoughts. I don't know that I'm asking for a decision tonight. We've got time to add it if we decide that we want to do that. But, you know, I'd be of the same thing. I'd love to see social studies back in a better structure than what we have it now. But here's the thing, I do want to make sure that when we bring it back, we're at a point where we're going to be able to sustain things. I'd hate to see us make some decisions now, then all of a sudden watch our fun balance start to crumble, and then say, okay, now I'm going to ask you to cut, you know, 500,000 or, you know, three quarters of a million out. Because I think that would be, that's going to be hard on staff, that's going to be hard on, hard on everyone. So.
One thing we haven't factored in the discussion so far is, you know, as we look out at the teachers, we're asking teachers who are not social studies teachers to teach social studies. And I, is it, am I understanding correctly that we're not really in compliance with RTI regulations? That we're pulling all these students out of social studies and they're essentially missing social studies entirely?
Yeah, well, that puts us in compliance with RTI, but it puts us out of, you know, they're losing the entire educational, they're losing parts of the entire educational programming that we offer to schools. So RTI, we're good, and that's the big legal side that we really need to cover. But they're just missing that overall, you know, it's.
Are there state regulations for teaching different social studies subjects throughout the course of the school?
Correct.
Yeah, are they, not that, are they getting the curriculum that they're supposed to have?
Oh, the mandated curriculum?
Yeah, mandated curriculum. There is mandated curriculum that ISB has for social studies that we may or may not be hitting.
Manded, it's been structured.
That would be data that'd be pretty compelling.
Well, he did it.
And I don't think there's, there's nothing out of compliance as far as the teachers being able to teach it. I mean, we're within high school, not, high school, they need to be certified, but they don't. But that just comes back to the best practice, what's best for kids. And I get the money thing too, I do, believe me, I do. So that's just kind of where we go.
And you said that this is, what was actually presented seems to be counter to what is actually reality, that it's not, we're not teaching social studies in the newest language, we're teaching social studies.
Right. And I can't, I've done extensive research, I would say, in the last two months on this, so I'm not. There are districts that do do it during social studies, but their rationale is budget savings. And they have a truer, more system to, truer system than how they're doing it. But it, like I said, here, as soon as there was that pushback, and I was not here to be part of the pushback, I've seen the emails following said pushback. It was, okay, let's just do it, but we'll do it during the encore time. So now we can tell people that social studies is happening, and it is. I mean, there is some stuff, however, it's not, it's not the true form of it. A majority of the districts that are doing it where they're incorporating that language arts into social studies class, not the other way around.
So you say there's some difficulty with the language arts teachers teaching social studies. Is it much more difficult for a social studies teacher to teach language arts?
No, and the difficult, and I'm not saying there's difficulty with, I'm saying there's difficulty with all, right now, our science teacher, language arts teacher, math teachers are all teaching social studies. So I would say, we're fairly confident that our language arts teacher would have a relatively okay transition into doing social studies. So that's just my hunch. But as someone who's done math myself and I've known science teachers, that is a whole different genre for them to teach. On the flip side, they're not teaching language arts, but they're incorporating some of those texts, some of those, those nonfiction readings into social studies. They're not teaching necessarily the concepts of, that you would see language arts as a part of comprehension and recognition, those kind of things. But they're just giving those true biographies, those kinds of texts within social studies. And there, yes, I mean, in everything, you want to teach cross-curricular, in everything. You would hope your math teachers come up with your language arts teachers to talk to your science teachers. But I would say, to answer your question, I don't think the language arts teachers would have a problem. I think there would be more of a conflict with our, and I see it now with our science and math teachers.
Okay, so if you had the same budget and the same staff, how would you increase the content to the number of students taking social studies for next year?
It's a great question. I mean, and that's kind of where we are now, that we have to be in compliance for the RTI, that legal ramifications, we have to do that. How we would do that, I mean, we can look at and see if we can have some of our paraprofessionals take that. And once again, I think we would be in, Melissa can help me with this. I think we would be in the legal realms, but once again, is that best for the students? And we have a special ed teacher versus a parent, so we have that as well. We can also be creative on when study skills is offered. Currently, study skills is offered third hour, and this is, I'm talking seven, eight now. That's where every social studies class is happening as well. During those first two hours, it's their enrichment time. You're looking at your PE, tech, art, computers, all that, that ag is during that time. If we put that during those times, then I would have to rearrange our special ed staff because we would need someone to staff it during first and second period. But then that would open a third period for all the kids to take social studies. So there are ways that we would have to look legally, and once again, I'm focused on the special ed, RTI side, but not the social studies side. But there would have to be a rearranging of schedule. If I can get away legally with having a paraprofessional do that, that was how, that is how I would address that issue.
Or do exactly the opposite of what we did, bring our social studies teachers back and get rid of some English language arts teachers to keep the same number of staff. And then get rid of social studies incorporated in English language arts, back social studies.
Not, I mean, that's not an option, I mean, that's definitely an option. Not a rub that I took, just because I've seen the value in the, in the double block. I mean, here is, I might give you two, but I've seen the, the value in the double block. You know, you have your reading block and then you have your English block tied together. I've seen the benefits of that. If social studies were to come back, that would be scaled back if we could still do that double block. But we would have to take some time off of that to add it to the current 41 minutes. So we're all at that level playing field. So that is an option. I have not looked at that just because, just not a rub that I take, but definitely a rub.
Jamie, you said study skills is taught during the third hour.
Yes, that's, that's your RTI, that's those.
So on RTI, our students are off doing their thing.
Correct, students are in social studies. That's where we lose, that's where those 54 students don't do social studies, is because of that third hour block.
RTI is not subject driven, it's skill driven?
It's skill driven, it's subject driven as well. There's also special ed minutes they get during our COTOS, during some isolated self-contained classes as well. But no, there's minutes written to their IEPs and 504s to get that minute those times during, it's called study skills, but that's their RTI.
Thanks for doing this again, Jamie, that makes it much more clear, at least for me, to understand what a day looks like. So actually, what you'd like to ask for are four new instructors, five through eight.
Well, and that's ideal.
To bring social studies back fully.
Correct, but to align better, kind of like Jake said, to kind of align better what's going on with social studies. I think seven, eight is, ideally five, eight, but seven, eight would be a better start. But we're still, this whole conversation I've said about seven, eight is true with five, six.
But you wouldn't be able to just do two teachers, you'd have to do a special ed teacher too.
It would be 2.5.
And the regulate, the required social studies education is in seven, eight?
Common core.
Is there state mandated social studies required for fifth and sixth, too?
There, it's different, you can go onto IST and check it out. But like kindergarten through fourth, you might have to hit this topic. Or, or seventh through 12, you have to hit this topic. It just depends, some stop at eighth grade, you know, that usually, or every year, no matter what grade you're in, you must cover this particular topic or this particular topic.
And that's something you can look at when we did the ROE, the mandated, we all went through and filled out when we were reading those things. Some of them can be met in speakers, through videos, doesn't necessarily have to be through classroom instruction, it could be.
That just says you hit the units, it doesn't give you a good score.
Correct. And our teachers currently, they do an excellent job. Three to four times a year, we do give them professional development days so the eighth grade team can sit down together with social studies and their focus is on, you know, the next unit, the next quarter, whatever the case may be. And it's effective, I mean, but that's, I mean, that's all the PD they get, especially for those teachers, that it's not their desire to teach and it's not what they're trying to teach and what they know to teach. So, you know, we kind of give them, you know, 13 hours if they guys plan a year, that's not effective.
Some of them have very sketchy backgrounds. They didn't, you know, they took the one required, I'm serious, one required social studies class in college. But somebody who is a social studies teacher has majored in history or in whatever, they're not, you know. I have all kinds of science background, I have one or two history classes.
Tends to be more subject related.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way to blend some social studies staff between the two schools?
We'd have to be creative, but, I mean, not if we, I mean, we have 500 students. So, yeah, I don't, I mean, just doing the numbers in my head right now as, as I'm talking to you, I don't see that. I mean, if it wasn't daily, I mean, perhaps, I mean, if we did that, you know, a couple of days a week? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, that way, yes, but I, if daily, no.
If we were able to squeeze out enough funds to bring the staffing in, do you think that instructors, the teachers would be willing to, to be creative with designing curriculum and not buying all new textbooks or not buying all new programs and even further increasing the cost of?
No, absolutely, and right now, we have, I don't know, we have over 30, so we would have a class set because the numbers would be down to 22, 23. If we pooled all those books, like I mentioned before, where some classes have five, some have 15, if we pooled those together, we would have a class set, we would have that. Like I said, we can continue using CCC or United Streaming, some of these online video resources we can use as well. And, you know, if you bring in someone who's qualified and trained to teach social studies, they're going to be creative as well with some ideas and some suggestions, and, you know, we're bringing in curriculum coordinators, same thing. But no, we can, I would say minimal curriculum impact, I think we pull it off.
I guess what you're looking for is to pull everybody individually, is that where you're going?
Just trying to get a feel for, you know, because I threw three things out there. We could do something with math at the high school. Ted, I know, Ed mentioned, Andrew Superintendent, Mr. Rail had mentioned something about we needed to look at doing something with an athletic director. Social studies, I think these are all wants that we could all, would love to have. Yeah, it's just kind of maybe, give me some thoughts or some feels of where you guys are at.
I'll go ahead and start. I guess if, if what you're asking us to do is prioritize, do we think an athletic director is important as a teacher in front of kids? My answer to that is an easy no. But that being said, I think it was refreshing to at least hear that, to a certain extent, the community hadn't been dealt with fairly in, in what was done with social studies up until now. I also think that we need to look at building a curriculum, because that's what we're here for. In my view, in the time that I spent here, we always seemed to be making cuts, but we always found money for something else that we wanted. We found money for towers, we found money for notebooks, even though we were cutting teachers and taking people off in front of kids. So those were about choices that the board made before us, and not about necessarily all the economic realities that went into it. I guess what I wish I was in ministry of team to do is to look really hard at what we're going to do. This is a long time deal, and whatever we do in a year, we better be able to back it and say, this isn't a bad. I think that's unfair. I mean, if we take that chance, jump off that bridge, you guys better be able to pull over something back. Test results come out next year.
I would say based on Jake's comment, we did take away the honors or cultures at the high school level. And that directly impacts them being able, you know, being in that sequence then to take AP world history, AP US history, and then that looks at test scores, that looks at their abilities, you know. So that ultimately impacts them when they're unable to take those honors classes, funding here, it's putting that off. So the likelihood of their success in those high school social studies AP courses diminishes when they haven't had the experience in that reverse curriculum. And that kind of because they're not getting it at that middle school level. I think that the data would show over time, if we don't count those, that our numbers are decreasing in the AP social studies courses which are starting quarterly to that.
Yeah, every, let's see, so for math teacher, and just so you kind of give a price tag to what you know. If you're to add a math teacher, really what I did was I plugged in $50,000 for a teacher. Because by the time you, you know, and that's probably somebody at the lower end of the salary, the salary's got to be getting the side of the salary schedule. About 10% benefits in there, it's a pretty safe round number. So, you know, math teacher at the high school would be 50. If you, what you'd need at the middle school would be two and a half, so 125 there. If you just go with an AD, we'd have to pick up another halftime PE teacher. So again, another 20, so that kind of gives you a price tag, what it would look like. And then that kind of shows you, and again, these are based on conservative numbers where you figure the state's going to be late, you figure the state might miss or prorate. So conservative, but that kind of gives you the deficits of what you would see for 17, 18. And that's the base model, there's no teachers added in, that's our current staff right there. The other model's added two, and really, it kind of shows you what that does. That's plus two FTEs there, so again, there's your $100 built in. And then your graphs will show, you know, changes to funding or anything like that, what that does to your performance.
Ooh, that's a lot of numbers.
And that was before we called it through this, we could use sales tax for the account. Talking about that, and business services, maybe if we go through, hold it through.
Oh, and pulling things, oh, yeah, with one of the things that maybe we paid for that put it under sales.
Maybe the sales tax.
Sales tax, maybe we used that any of this, it would be a building, but.
Well, we need to be using the sales tax.
For some of the other things that we could have.
Other funds.
That would free up that money for the education.
What is our, or do we have a policy on unused assets being disposed of without approval? Because now we have a bunch of missing textbooks that we have to replace, and who approved that? To get rid of the textbooks?
Was it you?
Nope.
That's a good answer.
I second that.
Well, if we don't have one, we need to get one because now we have textbooks to replace because more than likely, someone thought their tablet program was going to save the world and we didn't need any books. And I'm not sure the pain is ever going to go away here. Someone has to be accountable for disposing of assets that we still need or may need again without board approval.
Can I just ask about all the science, but it's just like a social studies.
If we go back to our mission statement, that provide exceptional experiences, I don't think forcing some of our teachers to, that is not, in their own, in their own words, that's not their area of expertise, cutting social studies, this is not excellence, so I feel the same way. We've got to beef up our curriculum. You had asked me about deficit spending, and my initial response was no way, but we've got to, we've got to provide exceptional experiences. I don't want us to be discussed as the math.
We close our doors, we're not going to write in?
Well, if we're going to close our doors, that's, that's certainly something that will sway my opinion. But if it means moving forward with curriculum and looking at other areas, aspects, looking into the future and changing our budget to move some numbers around and free up some money that can be moved into that educational fund, but that's thinking long range. I mean, if Julia's projections are, we're going to end up closing the doors, I'm sorry, in social studies.
I understand, they have to look at a $2 million deficit in 2021. It's tough to swallow.
Well, your deficit will get bigger if you don't provide a quality education because you're not going to get any people in the community.
Yeah, we were supposed to be broke by now. Get a bit of projections again on 2012, 2013, we're compared $4 million upside down.
And maybe we got a deficit because we throw away assets without approval.
We just kept stretching, you know, everybody hopes the state's going to turn things around. Am I about saying, no, saying you should be on a share, do you think it's worth it?
Mike's just asking for our opinion, and so I threw mine out there that I'd like, I'd like this to be academically excellent. Jake presented that, I mean, when we crunch the numbers, we could stick with the math teachers that we have. However, that put us up to class sizes that if any, if any students come in, we could be exceeding that and then we're working against a contractual obligation. So, and we don't want to do that, we don't want to, we can't exceed class sizes.
We ran into a situation this year for two of our teachers where we had, you know, we had projected at the end of last school year with the students, we had around 27, 20 students in a classroom in, in math. Over the summertime, we had a number of students move in, we're sitting at 33. I, I know there's a, a place in, there was a place we found in policy that said it should average no more than 30 with no more than 35 students in, in a desk, that's for six through eight. In our classrooms, we can't fit any more over 32 desks in our classroom, you know, it said, or, or units of seating. You know, and we can't fit any more than 32 desks in, in our classrooms. And so, you know, we got to a point where we ended up having to put, you know, teachers on overload because we had students who moved in and we didn't have the spots, and that was going off 27, 28. Now, if, if we look at the class averages, you know, if we go to just with the four, you can see we're going to have an average class size of 31, an average class size of 30. Now, there's a possibility with the honors classes, typically, those are where the numbers will go down, you know, a little bit. Students, students don't typically, you know, tend to go up. We try to place those off of, off of, you know, testing, and that's helped us out quite a bit. But you can see geometry would be two classes of 32, which would be fairly crazy. Algebra concepts is 31. You know, if I run into that same number, I'm already starting to put teachers on, on overload if we have the same problem we had last year where we had a couple, a couple of people who move in and we've got to increase those numbers.
But there are repercussions for having teachers on overload, what does that cost, Mr. White?
I'm not sure what they get in.
So when Jake uses the term overload, I mean, I've heard that for a lot of years. At a body standpoint, I don't know what that means.
If you have 160 and, about in class, so six classes, 160, six classes. In high school, it's .14, at the middle school, it's .07, or no, did it back down to .035. So I'll just tell you, the money terms, it's probably a couple thousand per year. For the year, and that's, you know, the house insurance, you don't have to pay the other things. So, but the numbers are in the contract, and like I said, we cut them in half next time.
How many teachers do we have that get overloaded right now?
At the middle school, we have three, four of us, three of us.
Four.
We received overloads because I have 34.
And the impact of what we were potentially looking at, what done that would be, what? If we were to give you a math teacher, you, Jamie, to, social studies teachers, would that take all those overloads away?
Yes.
So if we're paying four teachers in overload, we might be looking at $10,000. Is that something that is forced upon?
Yes.
Somebody has to do it, and I'm going to tell you they're going to be doing it?
It depends on your numbers. I have five, five classes and I got 150 students, so they, your contract's changed.
There was no way around it.
There's no way around it.
Is there any sense of the, the feeling of that, is somebody go like, oh man, I've got overload? Or do they go, oh, I've got overload?
Depends on the teacher.
No general sense, I mean, do people just dread having?
Well, it might, and I'm not going to speak for that, but I can speak for my history, and even currently at the middle school, we have, like I said, we need to bring tables in, so we have some kids that, I mean, they're literally back to the wall. I mean, there's not much room. So there's a proto at district level financially, absolutely, but there's also, I mean, you're teaching this concept to 34 kids.
When I've given my teachers the option of having an overload by the number of classes or overload by, you know, instead of having, you can have six smaller classes or, you know, three smaller classes, or you can have two very large classes and, and keep, you know, your regular five-class schedule. Most teachers opt for the overload. Here's what I'll say about that. It also has an effect on, you know, supervisions, because if the high school supervision is in the contract, you take that supervision away still, you know, for them, and then it's a matter of trying to find, you know, other ways to get that supervision covered on things. You know, typically, I think most teachers would opt to have a smaller class sizes. Because when you have a large class size, then you're also talking about greater discipline issues when you've got more students to manage. And these three kids over here, you can't get individually to those kids, you know, and they start screwing around. You know, now it's causing more of a disruption in class, or there's more, you know, discipline issues that occur along with that. I, I mean, and that's, that's general, those are general statistics in education for class sizes, you know, for everything you're going to go through in a large class size.
Rumor is those rooms can get funky too in many days. My kids tell the horse.
That is cool. Yeah, that's just middle school.
Okay, thanks.
Do we, do we ever, as we talk about this and project about being in the red, do we ever sit down with a long-range curriculum plan and a long-range facility plan and like have a big, huge powwow where we, maybe it's even some sort of board where we can take social studies back off the board and put on an AD and really look at all the permutations so that we can get a good sense, all right, we've looked at all the options, all the permutations, we've looked at a scattergram and a curricular scattergram of sorts, you know, that this is what it'll cost us if we want to, to achieve this, and this is what this will cost us and this is what we'll have to give up. Because that's something I kind of felt like when we got rid of social studies, that we were told what we were getting, but really weren't told what we were, what we were losing. And I wish that would have been part, more of the discussion. So I'd like to do that somehow, and I don't know how we do that. How business services meets with facilities, which meets with curriculum altogether and works out. How business services meets with facilities, which meets with curriculum all together and works out.
Hi, is that be working? Maybe the way I'm through.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't get into that tonight.
So you get a chat for?
Yeah.
Yes, so, so I'm telling, so we're going to move on to the summer school library program?
Yes, uh, in your package there, Jamie presented a summer school library program. It's very much based off what was, uh, done last year and was very successful. Uh, again, it's our library, it's pushing out books in the summer and encouraging kids to keep reading over summer. And the cost has been provided at twenty-seven hundred. So what is, uh, is Janice still here? Janice, similar to the program you guys ran last year, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Highly successful?
I would say so, yeah.
In need of being increased?
What's that?
In need of being beefed up at, at all? Are there people willing to, wanting to, what are you hearing?
You mean staff members or you mean?
Staff members who would be willing if we were to offer more hours or, or another school.
I think this is probably sufficient for right now. I think this is fine, because we have an evening at one school and anybody in the district can go. It's not like we only have Cameron.